This conference will now be recorded.
Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the City of Warrenville Public Works and Infrastructure Committee of the Hall. It is Monday, April 8th, 2024. The eclipse date? This committee of the hall meeting will be conducted in the traditional in-person format. Anyone, but the public comment will only be available in person during the meeting. The remote meeting access is for viewing purposes only. Those viewing the meeting remotely will not be able to provide public comment via the remote meeting access. May we have a roll call, please?
Mayor Brummel?
Here.
Alderman Lockett?
Here.
Alderman Ashauer?
Here.
Alderman Berry?
Here.
Alderman Davalos?
Here.
Alderman Agustinovich?
Here.
Alderman Wilkie?
Here.
Alderman Widener?
Here.
And Alderman Kruckenberg is excused. You have a quorum?
Thank you. If you please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Just a quick note that City Administrator Christina White will not be available in person this evening, but she is here with us via the go-to meeting. And she is more than welcome, of course, to make comment. Also, now we were going to have citizen comments. I have nothing here right now in front of me. Does anyone here want to make a comment at the moment? If not, then you are more than welcome to make a comment when we come to the item that you would like to speak to, which is on the agenda for the business of the meeting this evening. Okay, officials and staff comments. First of all, Mayor Brummel?
Thank you, Madam Chair. A couple of things. One, a reminder about the special census that we're engaged in. The U.S. Census Bureau will hold a special census in 2024, so the city will have an accurate population count. Accurate population numbers make the city eligible for more state and federal money. This helps the city fund services such as street repair and public safety. And given the discrepancy in our former population and what we have now, this is a substantial amount of money that the city is eligible for. That's why we have the special census. So this is not just an empty enterprise. This is something that is a huge benefit to the city that provides us with money that would not be available to us, but we're entitled to because our population has grown. So, key dates, starting April 30th through May 23rd, the special census becomes available online. The Census Bureau will send letters and postcards in April and May with the survey link. And everyone counts. We ask all residents to take part in the special census. Responding is important, easy, and quick. Your response only takes 10 minutes, and there's a huge benefit to the community. Learn more about the special census at warrenville-il.us under News and Spotlights. And a reminder that certain volunteers and staff and all elected officials are required to complete a statement of economic interest. If you have received an email from the county clerk's office, or you know that you are required to complete a statement but have not completed it yet, please do so before May 1st. Fines will incur after that date, and I might add that already done mine, so follow my example. That's all I have.
Thank you. Alderman? Alderman Davalos?
Thank you. Mayor, do you think you could clarify if every citizen in Warrenville needs to do the census, or just new people that weren't here? But if you did it before, do you have to do it again?
Everybody. Yes.
Thank you. Thank you for clarifying that. I personally didn't know that.
Well.
Now I do. So we'll do it again. Okay, staff, I know that Dr. Kukler has an announcement to make?
Sure. Thank you and good evening. I wanted to make a brief announcement about the city's tree planting program. We were notified earlier in March that the amount of grant money the city is receiving for the tree planting program is increasing from $7,700 to $19,000. So staff's plan is to, it's a 50-50 plans, or programs, we have to match that $19,000 of city funds. We plan to use that money to pay for the tree planting this fall for 2024, and then also the 2025 tree planting, which will happen in the spring. And the reason we're doing that one in the spring is the grant funds have to be spent by July of '25. We anticipate that instead of the 100 trees for each of the two years, it'll end up being a total of 275 trees, so we can maximize the grant dollars. And we did develop and mail out a postcard last week, or recently, I don't know if it was quite last week, but over the weekend, we started receiving requests from residents in Summer Lakes for their tree requests for Parkway Trees. And the mailing was targeted to just the residents in Summer Lakes, which is a large subdivision with a lot of residents, but we have targeted for theirs. So it wasn't a citywide mailing. And we'll see how that goes. They have till May 15th to respond with their requests, and hopefully we'll get enough to fill out those 275 trees, and we can start working with those residents.
Great. Thank you. Anyone else from the staff have a comment? Okay, thank you. And now on to the business of the meeting. We have a presentation of the Water Ambassador Award. This will be presented through by Asset Management Analyst Cassandra Hernandez-Geldon.
Good evening. In February of 2024, the Illinois Section of American Waterworks Association, also known as ISAWWA, confirmed that Warrenville achieved gold status for the Water Ambassador Program. The Water Ambassador Program is an initiative created to elevate the public's perception, knowledge, and consumer education of the water industry. So that is done through engaging and sending out relevant information through methods of communication, so Facebook posts, hometown happenings, things of that nature. And so tonight, we have the ISAWWA's engagement specialist Shawna Richardson, District 2B trustee Michelle Piotrowski, and Executive Director Annie Storey, who will present the City of Warrenville with the Water Ambassador certificate and sign. And at this time, I would like to call up Crew Leader Joe McFadden and Utility and Maintenance Superintendent Zach Jardine to come up as we're presented with this award.
Can you make sure everybody goes to the podium and uses the microphone, please?
So on behalf of the Illinois Section of American Waterworks Association, I do want to congratulate you on the second year of receiving this status. You are one of 20 communities across the state of Illinois to receive this award this year. We are moving into our fourth year of the program, and we hope that we continue to see these beautiful signs throughout the streets of Warrenville and have you as Water Ambassador, which ensures that your community understands the infrastructure and the value of the water that you all receive. So congratulations.
Thank you.
Got to talk to him about shorts in that day.
Yeah. All right, gather together. Thank you. That's a great award, because we always get so many questions about our water in Warrenville. That is nice to see that there'll be some signs up that we are water ambassadors. So, thank you. Okay, on to number two, consideration of continued suspension of the electrical aggregation program. This would be conducted by Assistant City Administrator Alma Morgan.
Thank you and good evening. Last June, the City Council directed staff to revisit the electrical aggregation program to check on rates this spring. The current update from our consultant NIMEC is that there are no programs available that would guarantee the city residents and small business savings from the current COMED rate supply of 6.8 cents. Additionally, NIMEC advised me that they are moving away from fixed-rate programs because they are just no longer able to provide savings. Included with your agenda backup material is a memo with staff's recommendation to continue the suspension of the program indefinitely until a time where NIMEC will reach out to us and let us know when a program becomes available that meets the needs, that meets the council's desired outcome of the program, which is savings for the customer on electrical supply, or a rate match, so it is cost-neutral, and contributing to the generation of 100% renewable green energy through the purchase of RECs. The memo in your backup also includes information about current electrical aggregation program offerings, data from other communities provided by NIMEC, and Warrenville's historic participation in the program. This evening, our consultant Adam Hoover is here to answer any questions, and I am happy to answer questions as well.
Thank you. And would you like to proceed to the podium, and then if the, Alderman, did you have any questions or comments? Alderman Lockett?
So I guess what, I know a lot has changed. Like, in the past, without getting too much into your business and all that stuff, but how were you guys able to offer that, and kind of what things are you looking for in regards to being able to offer, or be more competitive than?
So are you talking about our previous programs and how are you, okay. So there's two things I just want to reiterate. There's the fixed-rate program, which is, hey, we can get a rate of six cents, I shouldn't use it, seven cents, and the COMED rate is six and a half cents, right? So we used to be able to find rates of four and five cents, and they were winners. We ran that program a couple of times, clear winners. Those have kind, what we're saying is, those have gone away. The Price Match Program, which we've ran before, I believe, and Alma did a really good job of putting on your historical comparisons together, but you used to be able to get 100% renewable energy and a civic contribution. Those days are gone. COMED has become very competitive. I just want to be clear, COMED's rates are good. And so if we're going to run a program that says we're going to guarantee to match the COMED rate, we need, our suppliers kind of need to take that risk. So much so that one of our suppliers actually dropped out, because it's a hard program to run, plus it's hard to match where the COMED rate is right now. We do have one supplier that we are running the Price Match Program with, that would provide 5% renewable energy. That 5% makes you an EPA green energy town, and that's kind of why they have that number. And it would match the renewable, it would match the COMED rates, there'd really be no change to the residents, but it's just not what it used to be. And we take some credit for that, because we think municipal aggregation has made it more competitive. So, but also COMED has kind of changed the way they purchased. I'll just say that. Their rate fluctuates more to month-to-month. This month, I know the annual rate is 6.8, but this month, we're all paying 6.3. So it just, next month, we'd be in 7.5. It's just, it fluctuates more. So, a little more risk on our suppliers' end.
And back in 2021, 2022, the civic contribution, why was that able to be given?
Because our suppliers, I don't mind telling you this, our suppliers were able to meet the COMED rate and still profit.
Okay.
And so they're saying, hey, we can still do that, but we aren't profiting like we used to, which is why there's a drawback in renewable energy, which costs them money, or a civic contribution. And to be honest, I don't, I don't think we'll be getting back to those 100% renewable energy with a civic contribution anytime soon.
But I'm sure you'll call us first the minute that we could save some money for the residents, right?
Yes, yes. Trust me, trust me.
I'm sure, I know you're right. Thank you.
Yeah.
Alderman Davalos?
Thank you. So what if we're interested in, we're not interested in the civic contribution, but the 100% renewable energy? Or, so one thing, I guess I need to understand is, is COMED care about this at all? Are they working on it? Would, should we expect for the future that they're trying to get more renewable energy, or is that just not their deal? And what are the alternatives for us?
State of Illinois does care about it. It's our current governor's goal to be 100% green by 2045, I believe that date is. And there's a lot of things that they're doing that they're, they're working to get there. So I would say it's more the State of Illinois' goal than COMED's goal. COMED would also say they're doing things as well, and I could tell you a little bit about that. COMED does like municipal aggregation. They don't make any money when they supply, they don't make money when they supply. So when you go to a different supplier, if you guys all find your different supplier, they don't make any money. They make money on the delivery and the taxes, which they're trying to raise right now. So they actually, you go on their website, they support municipal aggregation. So I would say that they are supportive of the program. Our 5% renewable energy program that we're running with some towns, I think it's about 40 right now, it adds more renewable energy that COMED is not doing.
And we shouldn't expect COMED to have that as an agenda, because of what you just explained, that they're making money on a different part of this, on the supply, as opposed to the kind?
Yep, I would agree with that assumption, but I don't, I can't, that's not a factual statement. Okay, I don't want to go out and say that's facts, but I personally would agree with your statement.
All right. So we really don't have any other options in Illinois right now, but sort of?
For renewable energy?
Yeah, that's what I'm considering. I mean, I always would like the lowest price, but I would, not me personally, but there are many people that would, would pay a little more to get more renewable energy.
Yeah, I mean, there are some towns, there are some towns that you could go find a fixed rate right now at seven and a half cents and get 100% renewable energy. I'm just making up an example here, but that would cost your residents money. But obviously, with the beauty of our program is residents can opt out or opt in. So you could say, we will offer you a program that costs you more money if you want to support renewable energy, had a better price than you and I could get on our own. And if you don't want to do that, you can opt out. So that is a program that some municipalities offer to be 100% green.
So to find out more information about that, for anybody who might ask, or our environmental advisory team or anything, would we go to your website, or what?
I would love to, I could stop by and talk about it, and kind of go through those programs and explain them. I could gladly do that. But yeah, that, that would, I probably would be your best resource.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? I think we would need a, we need a motion, I think. Alderman Lockett?
I'd like to make a motion to recommend the City Council continue the suspension of the electrical aggregation program indefinitely until NIMEC notifies city staff that a program meeting both minimum desired outcomes of the electrical aggregation program of, one, savings for the customer on electric supply, or a rate match, so it is cost-neutral, and two, contributing to the generation of 100% renewable green energy through the purchase of REC's becomes available.
Second. We have a motion by Alderman Lockett, and a second by Alderman Wilkie. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. Thanks, thanks for coming in. Okay. Number three, informational presentation on changes to the brush pickup procedure. This will be presented by, let's see here, I got it right here. It's Capital Maintenance Superintendent Jamie Clark.
Thank you. In your backup for tonight's meeting, you'll find the 2024 City of Warrenville brush pickup schedule, brush pickup guidelines, preparing your pile, and where to get free wood chips. One of the reasons that this was put on the agenda for tonight is there was a major change to the brush pickup, preparing your pile requirements. That requirement is that all residents must bundle their brush with twine, not wire, in order to have city crews pick up their brush. The reason that we've put this procedure in place is that the injuries that were sustained by employees over the years, and we feel that this will make brush pickups safer for our employees. This, last week was week one. Today was week two. Last week, approximately 90 residents received a violation notice, or an information card hung on their door, letting them know that their brush was not picked up because it was not bundled. There's a phone number on there that they can call to let, to talk to us about it, or let us know that they've prepared their brush for pickup. By this morning, we had 18 of those 90 residents let us know that their brush was ready for pickup. The crew was also supposed to pick up anything they saw while going through that area that was prepared, even if the people didn't call. Today, week two, there was approximately 60 notices handed out, and I do not know if anybody has let us know yet that they have prepared their pile for pickup. Moving forward, we truly believe that this will help improve the safety of the crew that has to pick up the brush. We've had multiple injuries over the years, and with that, I'd be happy to take any questions.
Okay. Any questions? Alderman Lockett?
I just have a comment. Not all municipalities do this, correct, to your knowledge?
Collect brush or require?
Yes, collect brush.
I don't know that.
Yeah, I don't believe they do. So this is kind of like a benefit that the city offers, and this is more or less just informing everybody. Not that it's, we're going to take it away if people don't start to follow the rules, but if people are continuing, continually getting hurt by, you know, by a service that the city's offering, you know, this is just reaching out to them, right, to kind of let them know?
This is letting them know that we need to make this change to keep the employees that pick up their brush safer. I also believe it will improve efficiency. Winfield Township made this change probably 15-plus years ago, and their crews found that they can get the brush picked up quicker. By the residents doing some work on their end to prepare it to go through the chipper, they can rapidly throw the brush piles, the bundled piles, into the chipper and move on to the next location.
Okay, thank you.
Alderman Widener?
Yeah, I'm impressed with the idea of trying to make this program safer. It doesn't matter what kind of twine you use, whether it's nylon or natural fabric when you're bundling things. The chipper will accept the other, as long as it's not wire?
I don't think it matters as long as it isn't wire. I've talked to some older residents that had some kite string in their garage. I told them to go ahead and use the kite string, wrap it around it, tie it like you're tying your shoe, and if it doesn't break while you're tying it, it'll be fine. But nylon would probably be okay, small nylon twine, but the natural twine and kite string size, or the type of string line that you use to pull a straight line, you can buy that at the hardware store on a big roll.
And you're emphasizing twine and not rope, correct?
Correct, twine, not rope.
And the one thing that I find challenging, I think, is some of the requirements are is you can have up to, I think, an eight-inch diameter log that's eight foot long. Is that, that correct, according to the?
Branches do not exceed eight inches in diameter. Branches do not exceed eight feet in length. That would not need a piece of twine.
And if you had two or three of them, you could lay, lay those out, and they would still be taken, right?
I believe so.
There's no way to bundle those together.
Yeah, there's no need to bundle those together.
Each one would probably weigh more than 50 pounds.
The hazard of the, of an eight-inch size limb or log becomes when it's short. When they're in the, the longer, say, five to eight-foot range, it's easier to feed it into the chipper. When they're short, it, you can't get away from it fast enough when it starts to go into the feed wheel, and it kicks up on the, on the end that hasn't entered yet. And if you're in the way, it's kicking up into your face. So bundling them together is not needed, but if they're, I believe that's the, under two feet long, will be left behind.
Okay. And I suspect that a high number of violations is because people just, the word hasn't gotten out yet, right?
Yes, it was on Facebook, it was on the website, it was in the hometown happenings, and so are a lot of other things that we noticed that, brush pickup program's been along, round, longer than I've been here. A lot of people just know when it is. They don't, they don't read it, and we get why they're not complying this first round.
Yeah, I suspect it's going to take a while to get the, the word out, and probably repeat communications, or notice a violation and not getting their brush picked up. We'll quickly alert them to the new program.
We do feel the word got out a little bit over the last week, because there was more compliance seen today than last week, when they went into Zone 2.
Okay, great. Well, it's a nice program to have. It's free, and I think the residents ought to hopefully abide and look out for the Public Works Department workers' safety as, as part of this new effort. So I hope, hope you get 100% compliance down the road.
Thank you.
Alderman Davalos?
So we just do it the two months in the spring and the two months in the fall, right?
Yes, April and May.
So for the, can you remind me for the summer, is it just that people don't use it, or if it's a storm or something, we have different, we have pickup, emergency pickup, I think, I've seen before?
Yeah, we, we do storm pickup. We typically start out with taking phone calls, and if the phone calls start to, to trigger that we need to do a pickup through a subdivision, an entire area of town, an entire zone of the brush pickup, we'll then get that out into social media. That, they'll also be required to comply with brush pickup, to get their brush picked up for storm damage as well.
Okay. So is it just that there isn't as much of a need in the summer, or is it an economic situation, the cost?
They recommend you trim your, your trees and bushes in the spring and the fall. And it also allows us to get other, the same guys that are picking up the brush are the same guys that are doing storm sewer repairs and road repairs and street light repairs. And in order to facilitate getting all those things done, we just do four pickups a year.
Okay, thank you. Mayor Brummel?
Thank you. And as a reminder, as Alderman Widener indicated, this is a free service provided by the city, and many, many people live in the city in apartments and town homes and other situations that don't use the service, correct? So I would just remind those that do use the service, if you're asked to do a little bit extra in preparation, remember, there are a lot of folks that are subsidizing that free service for you. The staff time that takes to do it is being subsidized by the whole city. So if it takes a little more effort to bundle it up and to make it so that our people are safe, it certainly seems like a reasonable expectation. So I, again, hope for 100% compliance. It's, it's a good program, and sometimes we have to make adjustments to make sure that our people stay safe.
Thank you.
I'd also like I'd also like to, uh, comment that the, um, city does provide the free wood chips, and, um, they can be picked up at the Public Works Garage, which is on Mignan, and that's accessible 24 hours a day, and they, you, you're more than welcome to come on over and spruce up your, your landscaping with, uh, free wood chips. Okay, thank you. Thanks. Oh, I'm sorry. Alderman Ashauer?
I was just gonna make the comment that it's too bad that we don't have a, um, volunteer day for brush pickup. It would shed a new light on the whole operation and the hard work that these guys do for the community, and it certainly would change the way that they put brush out. So, thank you.
Thank you, Jamie. Okay, um, on to number four, consideration of restarting the temporary water and sanitary sewer connection subcharge, surcharge incentive program. Uh, this would be Director Kukler.
Thank you. Um, you may recall that city council had previously approved a three-year period of time where the differential tap on fees for the water and sewer stubs was discounted 50%. The intent was in, the EMRP, this is a work, a recommendation that came from the EMRP work group, the intent was to incentivize residents to connect by, you know, saving, it's a sale, right, though, trying to get them to, uh, make a connection. I, in my agenda backup, I said two residents had connected in the last few years. Mr. Seabird had let me know before the meeting, there were three people on his block that had connected, so it's, I'll say less than 10 people have connected in the last, uh, three years. I don't have the records I had asked, financed for it, and Director Dolestrin answered me off the top of his head without looking, um, specifically into it. But suffice to say that, that there weren't many people that connected as a result. Um, so I, so the program didn't necessarily incentivize a lot of people to do it. It might have incentivized a few people, or at least people that may have been planning to connect anyway, were able to save a little bit of money. Um, I believe that what didn't incentivize a lot of people is because if you have a functioning septic system or a functioning well, it costs a lot, it still costs a lot of money, even if you save half on the, the differential tap on fee, it's still gonna cost you thousands of dollars to hire a plumber to come in and extend the service, um, into your house, and then possibly, depending on the configuration of your plumbing inside, make some adjustments in there as well. So it would be less expensive with this program, but people aren't motivated if they've got functioning, um, septic and wells to make this change, um, proactively. So I think it's on, it's still gonna continue to be on an as-needed basis. Um, people's, septic's fail, the DuPage County Health Department, if there's sewer available in front of the property, will not issue permits on, to repair or replace septic fields. So at that point, then, um, people would be required by the, um, not being able to get a health department permit to connect, but that'll take years to do. Um, I, my recommendation is to, we had a resident that approached the city earlier this year to, after the program expired, to, and wanted to connect, and was asking about the, the discount, and I'm not opposed and sad, I talked it over internally, we're not opposed to the resident using this program, so I'm recommending restarting it to, for a short period of time to, to expire again at the end of this year. Um, I'm also proposing to talk with the EMRP work group later this year when we start meeting again, um, to talk about the future of this program, if it makes sense to do in the future or not. Um, so we, I would anticipate next year, we do come back with a recommendation from the MRP work group on, um, the future of the program. So at this point, I'd be happy to entertain any questions.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? Motion?
Nope.
Oh, I'm sorry. Please state your name and address.
Bob Seabert, Albright Court. I think the program is very good. I, I think some of the confusion on my block, I helped my neighbor put it in, we put our own, uh, sewer line in. Uh, you don't need a plumber to put it in. You can, if you have people that know what to do. The major thing is having, being able to shoot elevations, so you can get the elevations in. I think it's a very good program. I think there's a large number of individuals, if they had information on how to do it, and how people could do this without a plumber, because many people get scared, because if you look at some of the plumbers, they're charging $170 an hour on a plumber. So I think that it's a very good program. I think that it's beneficial, and I think that if, it would probably be good to even have one particular night or a day or Saturday where people could come to the city hall and could get information on the particular installation in sewers and how they could save, because it is, when you're saving a few thousand dollars, I think it was about 2,800, that you would save, $2,800 is gonna be able to purchase. Ours was over 120-some feet, we're back quite a ways. You can purchase all the materials. So you've got a big step forward by having free materials. Then you, uh, rent a small back hole, you've got about $300, and then you just dig it and you, the pipe goes together very easily. The hardest part is if you don't have the same outlet for the septic, is the fact that you drill through the concrete foundation. But it can be done very reasonable, or the poor people can pay a very large amount to someone to put it in. So I think it would be good to get that information, because I believe there's a large number of people with their septic systems that could benefit by hooking up to the sewer system.
Thank you. Motion? Alderman Lockett? Thank you.
I'd like to make a motion, recommend the city council pass an ordinance approving a temporary water and sanitary sewer connection incentive program to temporarily reduce certain water and sanator-, sanitary sewer tap on fees through December 31st, 2024.
Second? We have a motion by Alderman Lockett and a second by Alderman Wilkie. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion passes. Um, number five, uh, consideration of CGS contract for FY 25, 2025 GIS maintenance service. Director Kukler, please.
Thank you. Um, consistent with the decision package that was presented at the budget workshop this year, staff has received a proposal for GIS management services for fiscal year 25 from Cultivate Geospatial Solutions, which CGS, um, are the consultant that we are currently under contract with, um, for, to provide those services for this year. Uh, their proposal for all of next year is $120,000, and as we progress throughout the fiscal year, staff is gonna evaluate what level of service might be needed for the, for the future. Um, at this point, the heavy lift, um, for the last four months of this current fiscal year and then all of next year is really to get the GIS up to speed with the, to be able to support the various software solutions that we're implementing right now. So Public Works just went live with, uh, Viewworks, um, enterprise asset management software at the beginning of this month. A big part of being able to go live is having the GIS upgraded and updated to, uh, be able to support that. And as we go forward with the BSNA enterprise resource planning software implementation this year and into next year, that, um, and the, and the Granicus citizen engagement and, um, website software, that's gonna be important to have the GIS be able to interact with those software as well, as well, and support those softwares. Um, so with that, I'd be happy to entertain any questions you might have.
Thank you. Questions or comments? Alderman Davalos?
So, so this cost is one year. Is there a cost after that, um, maintaining it, or?
So the, the, yeah, this cost is just for this next, uh, next fiscal year. As we go through the year, we'll determine what we might need in the future. Right now, um, I'm, we're dealing with the need twos and have twos for the GIS. I would expect that most, if not all, that'll be taken care of this year, and in the future, we'll start getting to kind of the want twos. We'll talk, you know, some of the different departments might want GIS to be able to do some other things it's not doing right now, but we'll have a little more flexibility in how we can schedule those, um, those services. And so with those, there won't be as not, as much urgency to getting those done all in one year. Um, so we'll, we'll, we're gonna go on a year-by-year basis to determine what services we might need. We don't know going forward what staffing changes there might be in the future. Right now, we have just a halftime, we've got a, a position that's split between being a planner and a GIS technician, and I would wager that the majority of his time spent on, is being spent on planning efforts, because community development's really busy with the various planning, uh, project, the various developments that are coming in. So it's not the, and that one person doesn't have the expertise that this consultant does, so that's why we're using the consultant now. But going forward, it may mean, we may need to make a choice between, do we continue to work with consultant, do we hire a full-time GIS person, um, and not consult out very much the GIS services? If we get to a maintenance, um, period where all, all that person is doing is just keep, just maintaining it and keeping it going, then that might be feasible to have somebody on staff take care of that.
Thank you.
Any other comments? Questions? We'd need a motion, please? Alderman Lockett?
Sure. I'd like to recommend the city council pass a resolution approving a professional services agreement for fiscal year 2025 with GIS management services with Cultivative Geospatial Solutions LLC.
Second? We have a motion by Alderman Lockett and a second by Alderman Wilkie. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion passes. Thank you. Uh, number six, consideration of electronic agenda packet viewing options for city council and committee of the whole meetings. Um, this would be Assistant City Administrator Alma Morgan, please.
Thank you. In fiscal year 23, council approved a decision package that requested staff develop a plan to allow for viewing electronic agenda packets from the dais to replace the printed paper packets. The current process that staff uses to produce packets is, uh, we produce and post an electronic packet to the city website, and that is viewable in PDF format. It also includes a full paper packet for staff and elected officials. So the first question I'd like to ask the committee to consider is, is there consensus amongst the entire committee to eliminate paper packets for all elected officials and staff? If the answer to that question is yes, then the next step is to gain consensus direction on the preferred method for packet delivery. Included with the agenda packet is a memo outlining a few options for the committee to consider, with a staff recommendation of option two. There was a few items that were brought to my attention, or some questions that were brought to my attention prior to the meeting, and one item was, how would closed-session items be handled? So with any of those options, or with the option that staff recommended, the closed-session items would be printed and available here on-site for pickup. We would not be able to provide those electronically. Um, another question that was asked was if, or how many audience packets are printed for the meetings, and if there are enough audience packets available for an elected official to pick up on their way into a meeting. At this time, there's only a few, there's approximately five that are printed for each meeting unless there's anticipation for more, uh, audience attendees to be present. However, we can certainly print additional audience packets if that is something that council wishes to do. The audience packet consists of the agenda and a copy of the summary. So at this time, I'm happy to answer any additional questions.
Okay. Alderman Widener?
Yeah, one of the questions that I had is, we start bringing in our own computers to look at the agenda items, then our own computers are used to do city business, and they are actually foible? Have you checked into that? Or, um, like, how do we maintain any privacy with our own equipment?
The, the device themselves, there would be no action taken on your own devices. The, your devices would be used solely to view the agenda items and the agenda packet. Now, if there was communication amongst the elected officials, such as texting or messaging during the meetings, then yes, then it would become foible at that time. But if you're using the device only to look at the agenda, similar to what you do at home, there, there is no FOIA invoked.
If you're taking notes, like, a lot of times, you know, when you're reviewing the packets and things, you're writing down questions to ask and, and, you know, your own comments in the different, um, agenda items, I just wonder whether, once you start doing that too, whether there's, uh, any kind of foible access to your equipment.
If you begin to take notes on your own equipment, I can follow up with the city attorney to see if those notes would be foible. Um, oh, I'm looking at the deputy city clerk, who is our FOIA officer, and the answer is no.
That, that information is, um, private note-taking, that it would be similar to any notes that you're taking right now. And unless it's a, a group effort, then your individual information shouldn't be, uh, foible. Shouldn't be considered a public record.
Good to know. Thank you. Um, I'd be interested in, in trying this. I guess, I, it's hard to commit for the, you know, for infinity that I would be able to handle this. It's a big change, you know? I'm used to doing things, I'm old school, I'm used to doing things on paper. I like having my notes and things like that, but, um, I don't know if we could, you know, try it out on a temporary basis and see if we can remove any of the fear factors with myself or, you know, other people with, you know, making this, this shift, but I'd be, you know, willing, willing to try to see how it goes, I guess, is, is my thought on the matter. I don't know what the other council members think. Thank you.
Alderman Lockett?
Yeah, I agree with the recommendation from staff for that option two. Um, some of these packets just gets, I, I mean, it's like crazy. And having all of that, like, in my house, like, you fill like a file cabinet quickly, you know what I mean? And it's just kind of there. Um, I think the, the other options down the road potentially for the devices at the dais and taking them home and doing all that, um, I, I think this is a good first step to get to that. I don't think we're ready for that. And also, I think, if I remember with the ERP, some of the companies that we're working with, they might be able to integrate some of that in, into this for us later on down the road. And I think we have a lot of technology going on right now, so maybe we don't wanna add a little more to it. I don't think so. Um, but I think option two would be great, as long as we have the agenda and the, um, attendance package, uh, that are coming. Cause I, I read all mine on my phone, you know, or on my computer at work. Some of the stuff I do print out, but then I don't really come to pick up my packet until like Monday morning, just to see if there's anything additional or anything was added. But, so for me, I don't think it would be a big deal, uh, and I think that option two would be the best way to start it out.
Alderman Wilkie?
Would the same timeline for, you know, like, Friday morning or whatever, would that be when things would be available to us?
Uh, Friday by 5:00 PM, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thursday, 5:00 PM, a day earlier.
Alderman Ashauer?
Just, uh, comment, I don't have any trouble with paper. I'm a dinosaur, and the new system's gonna take me longer in the weekend to do the job that I'm doing now, and that's my hangup on it. The, uh, time to train this old brain could be too much for me.
Alderman Davalos?
Yeah, I'm just a little concerned or need to explain to me about, about security of bringing our own devices and phones. I know it's the, the Wi-Fi, the public city Wi-Fi, right? I mean...
If you were to connect to the city Wi-Fi, we would provide the city staff connection, and that would be something that we would need to set up in advance so that your device would connect automatically to the cities, uh, to the staff network connection. So it would not be what the general public connects to, which the password is available throughout city hall for people to, to log in that password. It would be protected password that's this long, and only through the city's network.
Do we have enough of security in place? So let's say, the city's worried about the city, but let's say I'm worried about my system, getting contaminated or getting, if the city's hacked, let's say, which things have happened. Does that, I mean, I don't know enough about this to know... Does that, I mean, I don't know enough about this to know who's in danger or what's at risk, and sometimes mopping up those messes can be a little expensive. So I guess you work that out, and once we make a decision, I suppose things come into place that, that protect the city and protect the Alderman, I'm assuming.
Yes, I can follow up with our IT services company, but I believe that just accessing the internet through the Wi-Fi system and viewing a packet should not be an issue. It's when you're opening emails and clicking on links or responding specifically to someone that sent you something is where it poses a risk and a threat to the city's network. Going to the city's website, opening the agenda packet from the website is not a threat.
Okay, thanks.
Mayor Brummel?
I remember when I had to give up my BlackBerry and get the smartphone. It was like the end of the world for a couple of weeks, and then I got used to it. I have to say that our weekly report that we get, I rarely look at the paper anymore because I'm used to doing it on my phone. This comes out, comes in an email, I read it on the phone. Once you get used to that, it's far easier than looking for a copy laying around. Getting the information is perfectly safe when we're here. It's just like getting an email. I mean, there's no, unless, as she said, unless you click on something, it's not, and it's the future. It's the way things are going. It'll save staff time, which I'm very much interested in. This is mundane stuff, preparing all these papers and everything for us that they could use in a better, to much better effect. And we take that little bit of responsibility, which I think is okay, to move forward, that we do a little bit more so staff can do more on things that they do very well. So I think this option number two is a good way to go. If you want to put a sunset on it and say, we'll come back and talk about it in six months, let's try it for six months and go six months and see how it goes. But I suspect everyone will be fine with it after a few weeks. And again, as Alderman Lockett said, it's, a lot of the stuff, like when there's a 27-page contract, you know, none of us read that, and we're not, we're not lawyers. There's no need that that be copied for eight, for nine people. If you want it, you know, maybe what we could get is just the agenda and a synopsis of the agenda printed for everybody. And then if you've got something you really want to look at, then you go to the website and look at it. So there are a lot of ways, I think, that we can adjust to this, and it's going to be no big deal after a little while. But I think it's, it's the direction that everybody's going. I go to so many meetings now where everybody has their tablet, and that's the way it's done. So I think it's a great idea. Yes, please.
I would like to reiterate that if anyone wanted to print out any of the supporting materials, they certainly can at their own home, or they can come here to city hall and use the computer in the elected official's office to log on to the website, or not log on, but log on to the computer, access the website, and then print whatever materials they would like from city hall. This would basically just eliminate the process from staff doing it.
I have a comment. During the pandemic, I asked the city not to provide me a packet because I live in a condo, I don't want the stuff sitting outside my door, or anybody could come by and pick it up. Obviously, they can't put it in the mailbox. So I used my own computer at home and split my screen and looked at this and looked at that, and, you know, if I had to have something for closed session, I did come and pick those papers up here. We don't have a closed session every single week, so it was easy for me. I was going to work every day, I just didn't want, we couldn't come here. So it was, it was just easier. I like the, I don't personally have a laptop or a tablet, so option two would not be for me. And actually, I think that option three might be a good idea because I think eventually this is the way we're going to have to go. So if we're going to do it, let's, I figured, let's do it. That's my comment. Okay. And Alderman Davalos?
So just to build on that, option two, option three, let's just say, it's a cost issue. Is there anything else other than costs that is the reason that the staff would recommend option two?
Staff recommended option two because that is the least expensive option to be able to move forward with at this time, and could be implemented right away.
So at this point, there aren't, because it's the beginning parts of this, there aren't really any estimates for the other options of getting a device that would stay here?
Correct, correct. We weren't, staff was not clear on which direction to go, so that's why we wanted to bring this forward first, to ensure that the committee wanted to go paperless, and then if the answer is yes, then select an option to move forward with. So if the consensus is yes to go paperless, then the next option is to select which route do you want to go. Do you want to start out with option two and ease into it, or do you want to move forward with option three, which will require more time for us to gather additional details, work with Orbis, have them provide estimates, and then find out what types of devices would need to be installed? What type of software do we need? What's the cost going to be for maintaining the software and evaluate staff time, you know, and whether or not we need staff on-site to be able to troubleshoot those devices? So there's more research that goes into that. I just didn't want to spend the time on that until I knew for sure which direction you all wanted to go.
Yeah, as I think about it, my personal concern is, I have a computer at home that stays there, obviously, and a phone. And it'd be a lot easier not to do this on the phone, just because I think, for me, you know, it's smaller, and there's all these charts, and pretty soon you're looking at tiny little things. So that's where I'm a little hesitant. I mean, I'd find to try option two and see how it goes. I'd prefer not to have to purchase something that I don't, I only need here at this point, but I guess I would do that. So that's my, that's where my struggle comes.
Okay.
Thanks.
Mayor Brummel?
Just a reminder that the difference between two and three is the significant initial cost for three. It's a, it's a lot of money to spend on something where everyone's not confident this is exactly the direction we want to go in. So it seems like option two makes sense to get our feet in the water, see what it's like, and see if we want to go any further down the road with it. Maybe we want to go back. But this would give us a chance to find out if this would work better, and again, save staff time, save you a little bit of paper, and not have to come here to get your packet. You get your packet on your, on your phone or on your computer at home, and it saves that driving time also. So, anyway, I think two is good.
Alderman Lockett?
Yeah, and I guess just to clear something up, option three and option four are both the city purchasing the devices, but those devices are not to leave this room. So even if we go with three or four, it's, we're not taking anything with us. We would still have to come here to get the information or view it on our phones or another device at our home.
Correct, correct. Allowing the devices to leave the city would be a huge liability.
Right, okay, thank you.
Alderman Widener?
Do we have any sense of what other communities do and what a tablet at the dais cost would be? Not a full-fledged computer, but just having copies, something that would be electronic that would have copies of the agenda items and all that backup information on them?
The information that I have is just from Orbis and the communities that they serve. They have some communities that are still full paper, like we are. They have some that have tablets that are at the dais just for viewing the agenda, the agenda, the summary, and the documents that are available. So they kind of have a mix of both. They're comfortable going either way, but we haven't researched costs for the devices at this point, or software maintenance costs and installation and all that. We have not investigated that piece yet.
Okay, so we can't even guess at what the range of cost would be per tablet or anything like, like that at this time?
Depending, I really wouldn't want to guess. I know that we did purchase tablets for Public Works recently, and they were $800 each for those tablets, but I don't know that those tablets would work at the dais for the type of service that you guys are looking for.
Okay, thanks.
Alderman Davalos?
My last question is, any input from other people using the dais, like the plant commission's only Board of Appeals? They would be here, and maybe they're getting, imagine they're getting large packets. Has anybody ever, I wonder what they think? Do you know anything about that?
We have not inquired with the volunteer commissions yet at this point. We wanted to start with city council and committee of the whole meetings first and assess it there, and then based on how things work there, then we would evaluate how it would work moving forward with the volunteer commissions.
Thank you. Would anyone like to make a motion? Alderman Lockett?
I guess just a quick clarification. Are we doing it effective May 2024? Are we putting a trial date, or?
That's up to the committee.
You're making the motion?
I'll make the motion. All right. I'd like to make a motion, city council direct staff to implement option two, eliminating paper packets, effective May 1st, 2024.
Alderman Widener?
I just have a question whether or not we could add to the motion investigating the cost of providing equipment at the dais for city council members' use, just so we have an idea what, what the ballpark would be for outfitting us electronically up here. So I can just see it would be convenient not to have to lug, you know, equipment from home and to be able to view the agendas, you know, from, from the dais when you, when you come to, come to meetings.
Alderman Lockett, do you agree to the change to the motion?
He's working on it.
Okay. Go ahead.
Just a point of clarification. So we're not, we're not ruling out three? We're just saying we'll try two and then maybe go to three? Okay.
Okay, try it again.
I'd like to recommend city council direct staff to implement option two, eliminating paper packets, effective May 1st, 2024, while also direct staff to investigate potential costs for future electronic devices at the dais.
Second. We have a motion by Alderman Lockett and a second by Alderman Wilkey. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Nay.
Motion passes. On number...
Alderman, I'm sorry. Alderman Berry, before you move on, it's Christina. Can I ask a quick clarifying question?
Christina?
Hi. Sorry, can I ask a quick clarifying question?
Mm-hmm.
Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay. Are, is the direction to staff to look at electronic devices just to view the agenda and summary at the dais?
Yes.
Yes. Okay. And is the direction also when we eliminate paper packets, are we printing extra audience packets so that you still have the agenda and summary in front of you before the meeting in a paper format or not?
Yes.
That wasn't in motion.
That was not in part of option two. The packet is, the paper packet for the elected officials and staff, they would no longer print. Individual officials and staff may print their own to bring to the meeting. I guess that unless the Alderman needed to have something printed, he could always call here and have it printed, or come ahead of time and use the computer in the Alderman's office to print something. Is that correct?
If someone needed something printed, they could print it from their home, or they could come in and use one of the computers in the elected official's office to print out what they needed.
Okay.
If you would like the additional audience packets available for elected officials to grab on their way in to a meeting, you could amend the motion to include that to ensure that staff prints enough audience packets to be available for the audience and for elected officials.
Mayor Brummel?
Just a reminder that we're talking about just the agenda and the agenda summary for these packets, not the complete packet that we're...
The audience packets, correct.
Okay.
Okay. Administrator White, is it, are you, are you okay with what we're talking about?
Just wanted to, absolutely. I just wanted to make sure it was clear what, what you were asking us to do, because there was some discussion about the audience packets. I want to make sure we're setting, we're delivering what you're asking us for.
Okay.
Okay. Futures comment.
Clerk Gravetti, are you okay with the motion? Is everything okay?
Have, are you, is someone...
You're okay.
...ending the motion, or are you just creating a no motion to direct staff?
No, I think we're okay with the motion because we're following, then, what it says in option two.
Okay.
Did we get a second?
I believe we did.
Yes, and we voted on it, so everything's good.
We're done.
We're done. Good, thank you. Onto number seven, a consideration of solicitation request for the 2024 bike rodeo. This is, again, Cassandra Hernandez Galvin, the asset management analyst.
Yes, so for the bike rodeo, part of the event, the commissioners like to focus on bike and pedestrian-related safety information, and in addition to making it fun and engaging to children and families, they look for prizes and giveaways. So BPAC is requesting city council's authorization to solicit to local businesses for donated items to use as prizes and monetary donations for the 18th annual bike rodeo that will be taking place May 18th. In your backup agenda, there's a copy of the solicitation policy and a memo with further details.
Alderman Widener?
Yes, we have a history of doing this year after year for the bike rodeo, and unless there's any objection, I make a motion to recommend the city council approve their request to solicit bids for the 18th annual bike rodeo event on May 18th, 2024, as stated in the April 4th, 2024 memo from asset management analyst and BPA C. Staff liaison Hernandez Galvin.
Second. We have a motion by Alderman Widener and a second by Alderman Wilkey. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Number eight, consideration of street closure request for the 2024 bike rodeo. Again, Cassandra Hernandez Galvin.
Great. Due to liability and safety concerns, BPAC has recommended to the council's approval for the partial closing of Stafford Place, again, for the 18th annual bike rodeo that will be taking place May 18th. In your agenda backup, there's a copy of the memo and the actual diagram of the city, the street closure, that's the same closure that they've been doing for several years already. And if you have any questions, I'm happy to take them.
Alderman Widener?
Again, we've been closing this street since the first bike rodeo, and it adds an element of safety to all the participants and staff that are working there. And with that, I recommend the city council authorize the partial closure of Stafford Place for the annual bike rodeo event, as stated in the April 4th, 2024 memo from asset management analyst, BPA C. Staff liaison Hernandez Galvin.
Second. We have a motion by Alderman Widener and a second by Alderman Wilkey. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion passes. Number nine, review and file the Public Works Department FY 2024 work program and decision package status report. This is an information-only, but if you have any questions, for Director Kukler, he's here. Alderman Widener?
Yeah, I just wanted to say congratulations on the earlier announcement about the grant program and the planting of additional trees during the next year. I think the community will greatly benefit by that. I know this is, be an extra work effort by the Public Works staff, but I really feel that trees will be benefiting the community, not just from their views, but from the that trees will be benefiting the community, not just from their views, but from the water they soak up and all the other things that they provide. So I appreciate your efforts and thank you for obtaining the grants. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments, questions? Okay, we have nothing under miscellaneous, and all I need is a motion to adjourn. Alderman Lockett?
I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion by Alderman Lockett and a second by Alderman Augustinovich. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. We are adjourned. Thank you.
This conference is no longer being recorded.